Delighted that you are here, and I'd like to call to order this regular commission meeting of the Macon Bibb County Commission for Tuesday, June the 18th. We will start our meeting, as is our custom and practice, with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance. So would you please stand as you are able, and I'll call on Minister Belvin Ware to come and lead us in prayer, and after that, we've got a couple of 4-H students that will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So please stand as you are able for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. Dear God, for this is the day that you have made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. Dear God, we thank you for this privilege of life. Dear God, we thank you that we were able to rise this morning, and you was able to send us on our way, and you was able to keep us safe thus far. Dear God, now we invoke your presence in this place. We pray that as our mayor, and as our commissioners, and as the citizens of Macon, Georgia, have a seat in this meeting. Dear God, we also pray that your Holy Spirit will sit with us also. Dear God, we pray that nothing will be done out of selfish gain or deceit, but dear God, as Isaiah prophesized in your book, that the government shall rest on the shoulders of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. So dear God, we pray that any decision that is made, or any initiative that is started, dear God, it will only be started because it is your guidance, and it is your rule. Dear God, be with us, guide us, and keep us. It is in Jesus' name that we pray, and let all God's people say, "Amen."
Please join us for the American pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Our prayer tonight was led by, or given by Minister Belvin Ware, who's a native of Macon. Minister Ware is currently a student pursuing a degree in Christian ministries and leadership at Bethel University, and he has the ambition to further his education by attending seminary after receiving his bachelor's degree. Currently serves as servant leader of children, youth, and young adults at Macedonia Baptist Church. Minister Ware was recently recognized by Macon Middle Georgia Black Pages as a young entrepreneur and professional of the Macon Middle Georgia area. Minister Ware is married to the former Ayesha Ann Jordan, I hope I pronounced that correctly, Ayesha Jordan of Macon, and they have twin sons. Kingsley and Kingston, that'll keep you busy. But thank you very much, Mr. Ware, we appreciate you being with us. Our pledge of allegiance led by two 4-H students. First, Jasmine Martin, Jasmine, would you please stand for us? Jasmine Martin is a 10th grade student at Southwest High School. She's been in the 4-H for four years and was elected this month to serve as the 2019-2020 Bibb County 4-H president. Congratulations to you. Jasmine also had great success at district project achievement this past March with her first place with over 22 other individuals in the performing arts instrumental category. Jasmine played her flute to victory and will be competing this summer at the state level at Rock Eagle and in Atlanta. Jasmine was recognized at the Bibb County 4-H Awards Program as the recipient of the Outstanding Community Service Award. Jasmine has worked and completed over 26 community service projects, and has even led workshops and events with younger 4-Hers to teach them ways to give back to the community. Jasmine, thank you for being with us. And Zoe Economides, there you go. Zoe is an 11th grade student at the Academy for Classical Education, which I think is ACE. Zoe has been a member of the Bibb County 4-H Club for over five years, and loves art. She's a leader in Bibb County, serves in the Bibb County 4-H reporter, and was elected this past March to serve as the Northwest District 4-H Senior Board of Director. Zoe was elected by 500 of her peers in the Northwest District. Zoe also placed first in the district project achievement in the arts and crafts category out of 19 individuals, and will be competing in July at the state competition in Atlanta. Zoe has also received Outstanding High School 4-H Award and the 4-H Awards Program this month. So Zoe, congratulations to you, as well, we wish you both good luck and good fortune in your future endeavors. It's very refreshing to always, you know, day and age where we hear so much bad about the youth, to see such shining examples of good youth. So that, and Mr. Ware, thank you again for being with us. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes, and we have three sets of minutes that have been prepared and distributed, minutes from our pre-commission meeting of June the 4th, and our regular commission meeting of June the 4th, and also the minutes from the public hearing that we held that same evening, June the 4th. Can I get the motion to approve by Commissioner Schlesinger, and a second by Commissioner Wynn? Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of approval of those three sets of minutes, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and those minutes are approved. Next, we have invited guests, and I'm going to call on Spencer Hawkins, wherever Spencer Hawkins is, and also we've invited the United Way. George McCandless is here. George, like I say, you and others from the United Way, we're delighted that you're here. Come introduce, and then we've got something for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We appreciate you giving us a few minutes. Yeah, I have Lisa Berian is our Vice President of Resource Development, and Cleo Wright is our Campaign Director. And we're here to thank you, or through you, to thank the employees of Macon Bibb County. This past year, they contributed generously $24,661, just under 400 employees, to help United Way. And the good thing is, I think our missions are a lot the same. We're both working hard to improve the quality of life for everybody in the county, and so we appreciate y'all's support, and we would like to do the presentation, and do you want to come down? Do you want us to come to you, or?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Add a special word of thanks to Spencer Hawkins, who headed up our effort this year to raise money for the United Way. Spencer, thank you for undertaking this, along with all the other job duties you have as Director of our Emergency Management Services. So thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next item on our agenda are public comments on agenda items. These are agenda items are those items that are on our agenda for action tonight, so this is our chance to hear from the public before we vote. If you are here for a non-agenda item that you wish to bring to our attention, you'll be recognized later in the program. I understand a couple of people showed up for agenda items, or no? Well, Ms. Connie Williams, non-agenda, okay, we'll call on you a little bit later in the program. So that then brings us to the next item, which are committee reports. We have several standing committees that have been working diligently, and first committee report is from Operations and Finance, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The Operations and Finance Committee met on June the 11th, 2019, and took the following actions. The committee approved amending Chapter 4 of the Code of Ordinances to allow for the acceptance of special event permits any time prior to the event day. The committee approved an agreement with Widener and Associates for designs and topographic and civil site services at Central City Park Softball Complex in the amount not to exceed $47,000, which will be paid from SPOS funds proceeds. The committee accepted the following grants. A Georgia State Court of Accountabilities grant in the amount of $204,000, requiring a local match of $22,704, awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Court Veterans Court. The State of Georgia's Office of Governors Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Grant in the amount of $107,639, requiring a local match of $11,960, that has been awarded to the Macon Judicial Court Adult Felony Drug Court, and a State of Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for Fiscal Year 2020 in the amount of $259,540, requiring a local match of $28,838, awarded to the Macon Judicial Court Adult Mental Health Court, and finally, a U.S. Department of Transportation grant in the amount not to exceed $19,533,250, with no local match to subsidize air services out of Middle Georgia Regional Airport. The committee approved the following agreements. An agreement with Chorus Group LLC in the amount of $424,200 for cloud hosting and disaster recovery services relating to the AS400 and mainframe computer system to be paid from the IT budget. An agreement with the Corporate Flight Management doing business at Contour Airlines for a subsidy of alternate essential air services out of the Middle Georgia Regional Airport in the amount not to exceed $19,533, payable from the U.S. Department of Transportation's grant funds. An agreement with Corporate Flight Management, Contour Airlines, for the lease of terminal space at Middle Georgia Regional Airport at a rate of $56,234.50 for the first year, with an inflation increase thereafter paid to the county through September 30th, 2023. The purchase of a 1992 cargo van from the Macon Water Authority in the amount of $300. The committee approved the following supplemental appropriations. The transfer of $65,000 from fund balance in the FY19 capital improvements account for information security assurances proposal. A transfer of $180,000 from fund balance for capital improvements account for a GSD three-band aerial image and change detection survey. And a transfer of $200,875 from fund balance in the FY19 budget for capital improvements accounts for storage and backup-related components. The committee approved the revision of the policy in accordance with the Federal Brooks Acts regarding the selection of engineering and architectural firms for all road projects. And this concludes Operations and Finance Committee Report.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. Next report will be from Economic and Community Development, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow Commissioners. The Economic and Community Development Committee is made up of the following five Commissioners: Lucas, Wynn, Schlesinger, Watkins, and Allen. The committee met on June 11th, 2019, and took the following actions. The committee approved the appointment of William M. Shurling III to serve as an Associate Judge for the Municipal Court. The committee also approved authorizing Bragg Jam Incorporated, a nonprofit organization, to hold its 2019 Concert Crawl in downtown Macon, Georgia on Friday, July 26, 2019, and Saturday, July 27, 2019, to permit festival-goers to carry and consume alcoholic beverages in and about the designated streets of downtown Macon under specified conditions, and also to require Bragg Jam, Inc. to provide for and/or reimburse Macon Bibb County for all expenses incurred for security and cleanup. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. I understand no report from Public Safety? Okay, so that takes us then to Facilities and Engineering, and that report will be given to us by Vice Chairman Allen.
Mr. Mayor, the Facilities Engineering Committee met June 11th, 2019, and took the following action. The committee approved the installation of a street light on Shirley Court pursuant to Article 10, Chapter 29 of the Code, to be paid from Facilities Management Budget, Services to Government, Electricity Line Item. The committee also approved the amendment into the agreement with Cherry Street Capital Fund II LLC for the construction of a solar canopy project at the Macon Coliseum, provide solar power and parking improvements to the Macon Coliseum with no added cost to the Macon Bibb County. This completes the report of Facilities Engineering, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Allen. That brings us to our consent agenda. These are alcohol beverage applications that have been received. The first one was tabled in the committee of the whole meeting, prior to this meeting, for additional information, so that leaves just the one item on the consent agenda, which is the application for Club Xavier LLC. This is an application by Mr. Xavier Gilmore, and the business name is Club Xavier LLC, doing business as Club Xavier at 4740 Pineona Avenue. The sheriff has certified as to a successful background check on the applicant. The Business Development Services has certified that the appropriate licenses have been paid for liquor-mixed drinks to be consumed on the premises, and beer to be consumed on the premise at that location. Planning and zoning has certified that the zoning compliance is accurate. The engineer, our county engineer, has certified that it meets all of the distance requirements that are required for an alcohol beverage sales, and the ad that ran in The Telegraph, the committee of the whole recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the issuance of the license, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and that license will be issued as requested. That brings us now then to Old Business. The first item of Old Business is a resolution to appoint Shondell Graham as the Director of E911. The committee of the whole recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Shondell, again, I see you here with us, stand, be recognized, and we thank you very much for your willingness to serve as Director of E911. Next is a resolution to appoint Sam Henderson as Director of Small Business Affairs. Committee of the whole recommends approval there, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Sam Henderson is not here this week, otherwise he would be, but I know he's looking forward to assuming the role and responsibility as Director of Small Business Affairs. That brings us to Item C, which is an ordinance to approve the hotel motel tax distribution, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend Article 3 of Chapter 26 of the Noggle Code of Ordinances for Macon Bibb County to levy a hotel motel excise tax in the amount of 8% in accordance with 2019 House Bill 668, to provide for allocation of proceeds from such tax, and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to make this year Friday, July the 5th, a holiday, since it falls on Friday following the July the 4th holiday on Thursday, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing a one-time suspension of the holiday pay schedule as designated in Section 5-04 of the Macon Bibb County Government Policies and Procedures Manual regarding the 2019 July 4th Independence Day holiday, by amending the date of recognition for such holiday to also include Friday, July the 5th, 2019, and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is Item E, which is a resolution to transfer Tom Fontaine Ballpark to the Board of Education, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the transfer of the Tom Fontaine Ballpark property to the Board of Public Education for Bibb County pursuant to that memorandum of understanding between Macon Bibb County and the Board of Education dated November the 16th, 2017, and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to allow applications for special event permits to be received any time prior to the event, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend Chapter 4 of the Noggle Code of Ordinances for Macon Bibb County to allow for acceptance of special event permit applications any time prior to the event date, and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? If not, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is a resolution to authorize a contract with Widener and Associates for work on the softball fields down at Central City Park, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional service agreement with Widener and Associates, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $47,128 for design, topographic, and civil site services for the Central City Park Softball Complex, to be paid from SPOS bond proceeds and R.SPOS revenues, and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is Item H, which is the first of three grants that we received for the Superior Courts as they operate these specialty courts, and I'll ask the clerk to read the first. Actually, is there any objection to reading all of these together and voting on them as one? Then I'll ask the clerk to read Item H, I, and J, first being a grant to the Veterans' Court, and the second being a grant to the Adult Felony Drug Court, and the third being to the Adult Mental Health Court. The clerk will read those three by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the State of Georgia Council of Accountability Courts Judges Funding Committee for Fiscal Year 2019 in the amount of $204,332, requiring local matching funds of $22,704, for a total of $227,036, awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Veteran Courts in substantially the same form as the heretofore attached Exhibit A, and for other lawful purposes. Number two, a resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of the State of Georgia Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Grant in the amount of $107,639, requiring a local match of $11,960, that has been awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Adult Felony Drug Court, in substantially the same form as attached Exhibit A, and for other lawful purposes. And finally, a resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the State of Georgia Office of the Governor's Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for Fiscal Year 2020 in the amount of $259,540, requiring a local match of $28,838, awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Adult Mental Health Court, in substantially the same form as the heretofore attached Exhibit A, and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee heard all three and recommends approval of all three grants to accept them, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of receiving these three grants, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and these three resolutions are adopted. Next is a resolution to accept a grant for essential air service, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation under the alternate essential air service program, in an amount not to exceed $19,533,250, with no local match to subsidize air service out of the Middle Georgia Regional Airport, and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Chorus Group LLC for maintenance and recovery, disaster recovery, cloud hosting and disaster recovery, so relating to the old mainframe computer, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Chorus Group LLC in the total amount of $424,200 for cloud hosting and disaster recovery services related to the AS400 and mainframe computer systems, to be paid from the IT budget, repairs, and maintenance software, license, and maintenance line item, and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Mayor Pro Tim, got your light on, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I would not be supporting this. I do think that when it comes to IT, many of us just don't know a whole lot about the interactions, but there are experts that are supposed to know. I honestly think that, I think we're being misled by a lot of this stuff. I hope I'm wrong, I really do, and so I'm just sharing that information that we are continuing to throw money, and I just think we need to have somebody to come in and do a true assessment, that that money could be used to do a true assessment, to see where we are. And so now, if everything works out, then I'll say kudos, and I'll be the first to say, "I was wrong." I hope I'm wrong, but I think we are making a mistake, and we need a true assessment.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. One, no.
Two.
Two, two no's, so that's six to two. Commissioner Jones stepped out. Six to two, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. That brings us to Item M, which is a resolution regarding the contract for essential air service with Contour Airlines, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Corporate Flight Management doing business as, excuse me, Contour Airlines for the subsidy of alternate essential air service out of the Middle Georgia Regional Airport, in amount not to exceed $19,533,250, payable from the U.S. Department of Transportation grant funds, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a Next is a resolution to approve a lease agreement for space at the Middle Georgia Regional Airport for Contour Airlines, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with corporate flight management doing business as Contour Airlines for the lease of terminal space at the Middle Georgia Regional Airport at a rate of fifty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents for the first year with inflation increasing thereafter paid to the county through September the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval is a further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is the purchase of a cargo van for the Board of Elections, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the purchase of a nineteen ninety-two cargo van from the Macon Water Authority in the amount of three hundred dollars and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval is a further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to transfer money from fund balance into the capital improvement account for information security assurance proposal, and I'll ask clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of sixty-five thousand dollars from fund balance in FY nineteen budget to the capital improvements account for Macon Bibb informational security assurance proposal and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval is a further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Got one, no, Watkins, so that's eight, no, seven to one, seven to one, the ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. That takes us to item Q, similar ordinance to move money into the capital improvement account, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of a hundred and eighty thousand from fund balance in the FY nineteen budget to the capital improvements account for three GSD, three band aerial imaging and change detection, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval is a further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to shift money from the fund balance into capital improvements for storage and data backup, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of two hundred thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars from fund balance in the FY nineteen budget to the capital improvements account for some storage and data backup related components and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval is a further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Next is a resolution to revise our policy in accordance with the Brooks Act pertaining to the retention of architects and engineers for road improvement projects that utilize state and or federal funds, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to revive its policy in accordance with the federal Brooks Act regarding the selection of engineering and architectural firms for all road projects that utilize state and federal funds in substantially the same form as attached heretofore as Exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval is a further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is the appointment of a judge, an associate judge for municipal court, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve Mayor Robert A. B. Rickert's appointment of William M. Shurley III to serve as an associate judge for the Municipal Court of Macon Bibb County, Georgia, and for other purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval is a further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution pertaining to Bragg Jam and authorizing them to hold their annual concert in downtown Friday, July twenty-sixth and Saturday, the twenty-seventh, in certain conditions, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing Bragg Jam Incorporated, a nonprofit organization, to hold its two thousand and nineteen concert crawl in downtown Macon, Georgia on Friday, July twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, and Saturday, July twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, to permit festival goers to carry and consume alcoholic beverages in and about the designated streets of downtown Macon under specific conditions, to require Bragg Jam Incorporated to provide for and or reimburse Macon Bibb County for all expenses incurred for security and cleanup and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval is a further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution for a streetlight on Shirley Court, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving a request for the installation of a streetlight on Shirley Court pursuant to Article ten of Chapter twenty-nine of the Macon Bibb County Code of Ordinances to be paid from the facility's management budget, services to government, electricity line item, and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval is a further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution approving a new solar array in the Coliseum parking lot to be erected by the Cherry Street Capital Fund Two, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to Macon Bibb County's agreement with Cherry Street Capital Fund Two, LLC, for the construction of a solar canopy project at Macon Coliseum to provide solar power and parking improvements to the Macon Coliseum with no added cost to Macon Bibb County and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval is a further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to issue a quitclaim deed in regard to a lien on fifty-seven forty-eight Whipple Wheel Drive, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to provide a quitclaim deed in redemption for a sheriff's tax sale for fifty-seven forty-eight Whipple Wheel Drive and for other lawful purposes.
The Committee of the whole recommends approval is a further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. And finally, a resolution for an agreement modification with Safebuilt to provide a plans examiner force for a limited time, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to Macon Bibb County's agreement with Safebuild Georgia LLC to provide for an addition of plan examination services at an additional cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars per two months and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval is a further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. There are several pieces now of new business that have come down already from the clerk's office, and these new business items will be referred to committee and taken up at the meeting of the committees next Tuesday morning beginning at nine o'clock a.m., and I think that'll be the twenty-fifth, right, June the twenty-fifth, Tuesday, June the twenty-fifth, beginning at nine o'clock. These new business to date include item A, a resolution submitting the names of Ray Pippin, Steve Kruger, and Eric Manson as a slate of nominees to succeed Ray Pippin on the Macon Bibb County Hospital Authority Board, gonna refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Next is an ordinance to approve a budget amendment, and actually, there are three companion resolutions, because I think Joyce Schaefer is among a panel that's being submitted to succeed Joyce Schaefer, and then in addition, there's a third nominee as well. Ray Pippin, Joyce Schaefer. No, wasn't Eric Manson? There's a third one, and I'm gonna refer all three of those. There's a slate of three to select, but they're all three nominations to the hospital authority, we're gonna refer all three of those to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Next, item B is an ordinance to approve a budget amendment to the FY nineteen budget, transfer of funds, total amount of thirty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars from information technology repairs and maintenance computer hardware account to the small equipment and improvements account. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item C is an ordinance to approve a budget amendment to the FY nineteen budget for the transfer of funds, total amount of one million two hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred dollars from salaries and wages full-time, benefits health insurance, benefits, FICA benefits health insurance accounts, to the salaries and wages overtime and employee benefit workers' compensation accounts to resolve account overages. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee as well. Item D is an ordinance to approve a budget amendment to the FY nineteen budget for the transfer of funds in the total amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars from salaries and wages accounts for professional services, repairs and maintenance, rental, copier, lease, operating supplies, animal, operating supplies, medical, and small equipment and improvement account to resolve the lack of funds in the operating section of the budget. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee to figure out what the heck that's all about. Item E is a resolution approving the request for the installation of a streetlight on Lake Lock Drive pursuant to Article ten, Chapter twenty-nine of the Code of Facilities Management. I'm gonna refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Georgia DOT for the purpose of obtaining lighting for the SR State Route twenty-two slash Fulton Mill Road roundabout project, with the cost of materials and installation to be paid by Georgia Department of Transportation, cost of operations and maintenance to be paid by Macon Bibb County, gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a new lease agreement with the State Properties Commission for office space located at five sixty Oglethorpe Street, occupied by the Department of Juvenile Justice to begin July the first and expire June the thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. And finally, item H is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant from State Farm Mutual Insurance Company in the amount of ten thousand dollars with no local match to be used by the Bibb County Sheriff's Office for the Teen Driver Safety Summer Program. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee as well. These are the only items that have been prepared by the attorney's office and sent down thus far, but others may be forthcoming for the balance of the week, so please check the agenda that is published on Friday afternoon for all of the ordinances and resolutions that have been referred to our committees, which again, will meet next Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, beginning at nine o'clock in the morning. That brings us now to the final item on our agenda, which are public comments on non-agenda items, and several people have been waiting patiently to talk to us about non-agenda items. Let me call on June Thomas first, who wants to talk to us about the Vileville Christian Towers. Ms. Thomas? Thank you very much for your patience and for waiting. If you'll come to the podium, please ma'am, and adjust that microphone so that we can hear you, you'll recognize for up to five minutes.
Thank you for this opportunity. We at Vileville Christian Towers consider that our home. We consider cleanliness, we consider activities committees, we consider being looked at as individuals who are deserving of what we are asking, and that is a decent, clean place to live, where we don't worry about our safety, where we don't worry about somebody creeping into the building late at night and doing bodily harm to anybody or destroying our property, which we have to worry about now. So we come before you with this plea of help. We want each and every one of you to think about this. Your mother, your daughter, your sister, your brother, your aunt, your uncle, anybody who is a senior citizen is in this predicament. Ours is extremely bad because the company that bought this place from the seven churches three years or four years ago have done absolutely nothing to improve this property, to make our home more livable, and it is quickly going downhill, quickly. So we need help from somebody we know not who. I understand that Bert Bivens is the commissioner of our area, so I'm addressing him. I'm addressing Mr. Al Tillman, who came to our council meeting the other day and spoke with us and suggested that we come before the commission with our plea for help, whatever you can do for us, where you might direct us to go for help, because we don't know what to do. And we senior citizens think we should have a decent place to live, we should not have to worry about all of these things that are going on. I had a list of things that I was gonna read to you, but I think what the others have to say will let you know that our situation is real. We're not just little old ladies that are coming out here to say, oh, who is me? No, we've got real, honest-to-greatness concerns, and we really would like for the commissioners to look at our situation and see what they can do to help us. Thank you very much.
Ms. Thomas, thank you very much. Sorry you're having the problem, but it's duly noted, and we'll see if we can look into it and see if we can find somebody to give you some help. Next is Ms. Patricia Purify, Purifoy? I don't know if I'm pronouncing that correctly, but you also, Purifoy, you also wanna address us about Vileville Christian Towers, you'll recognize for up to five minutes. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you very much for listening to us. I'm the president of the resident council at Vileville Christian Towers, and like Ms. Thomas stated, we are having a lot of problems. We need some security at our building. We don't have any security. At five o'clock, when the office closes, we're on our own, and everybody in the building is elderly and disabled to a certain point. We have people walk in in the middle of the night. The other night, someone got hit in the head. They were trying to, three twenty-year-olds were trying to break into the change machine, where we get changed to buy snacks or use the laundromat, and this was like at two o'clock in the morning. Some people can't sleep, and they just get up and run at night and go downstairs, get a snack, whatever. We shouldn't have to be afraid to walk out of our room. We shouldn't have to be afraid to come out of our room after it gets six o'clock at night. That's our home, and we should have, we should be able to feel safe, and we have begged for security. Every time the firemen are called or the sheriff is called, the first thing they do is say, where's your security officer? We don't have one, sir, we're on our own. And there's just, at our age, we shouldn't have to worry about where we live and if we're safe. we're safe. We live in a building fifteen floors of people, and we should all feel safe. And any help, any help that you could give us, whether it's to HUD, the Housing, State Housing Authority, the Health Department, and the building is filthy, mold is growing everywhere. You know, any help you could give us, we would appreciate, because we haven't gotten any help from the owners and the administrators at the end of her rope. She can't do anything. So any help you could give us, just think, like she said, think of your mother, think of your sister, think of your aunt, you know. At our age, we shouldn't have to worry about things like this.
Ms. Purify, sorry that you're having the problem, but thank you very much for your patience and for being here tonight and bringing it to our attention. I understand also Connie Williams is there.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams? You also there at Vineville Christian Towers and want to talk to us? You'll recognize for up to five minutes.
Write stuff down, because I have no memory anymore. But I live at Vineville Christian Towers, and I've only lived there for a year.
Come up a little closer to that microphone if you can, please ma'am. You can adjust it. It'll, it'll, there you go.
Okay. I probably lived there for a year, but I was kind of wary at first because there was nobody on the end of my hallway. There was just me, and there's all these empty apartments. And one day, suddenly, I came out of my apartment, and the apartment across the hallway had a hazardous danger sign on it, "Do not enter," and it had tape across the doorway. And I had no idea what was wrong, but I started noticing that there was a lot wrong with the apartment. I just found out that the owner or the renter of the apartment across the hall had a dog that they never took outside, and that the dog died in there also. So there were dog feces covering the entire apartment, and it had actually been that way for a year. But we have people who, they're decent people. They're veterans, they're ex-teachers, they're just normal, everyday people from every walk of life. And you talk about blight. Well, it's coming, and it's coming right dab in the middle of the Vineville Historic District. We are across the street from the Allman Brothers Museum. We are right next door to Vineville Academy. And it is getting bad. People are scared. There are bed bugs they discovered in the building. They don't fix the air conditioners right away, and these are a lot of people who have breathing problems or heart problems. And there's, they have to sit there for days with no air conditioning. But we just wanted to say that we need help, and we need action, and we need leadership. And I just wanted to say something Martin Luther King said, that he was talking about churches that don't really help people in their communities or even in their congregations. And he said they had a driest dust religion. And I looked at your vision and mission statement, and I looked at the owner of the apartment's vision and mission statement, and everything looks great. But I just wanted to say that we have a real problem. It's going to be a real problem for the city. We have drugs coming into the parking lot. We have, I mean, people are selling drugs in our parking lot. There's a big brawl at the apartment across the street behind us, and it is encroaching it. It's going to be a problem for the city. And I just wanted to say, don't let Macon, Bibb County's vision or mission turn into driest dust words. Thank you.
Ms. Williams, thank you again. I'm sorry that you're having the problem, but thank you for being here, for your patience, and for bringing this to our attention. Thank you very much. Next, I've got Mr. Mike Odom, who wants to talk to us about pay raises. Mr. Odom, thank you very much for being here, for your patience. You'll recognize for up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Last thing before I leave, my wife has said, "Be nice." So this is my nice. Let me address some comments I have heard regarding my recently published column, talking about transferring increases to our professional servicemen and women. I've heard it said that people, that meant me, want to cut meals on wheels that feed our children. They want to cut parks and recreation to provide a place to play. They want to reduce funding for museums because they teach us about our history. I'd like to know, when did the government become my surrogate daddy to decide what's best for me and set, force me to have my values compromised? Governments are not in the value, in the business, nor are they equipped to teach values to the diverse cultures that we have around here. Unfortunately, many governments devolve into the business of selling themselves for votes. That's what's going on around here right now. Let's get back to the salary increases for our professional men and women. We have a gargantuan one-hundred-and-sixty-four-point-five-million-dollar budget. A two-million-dollar increase is less than two percent of this budget. Are you going to sit up there and tell me you can't find two percent in this budget? I could show you three ways in ten minutes. It's a value, it's a decision. What are your priorities? I have a real hard time with the priorities that you set. You're letting our best professionals be drawn away, and I don't blame them because they're not compensated fairly and they're disrespected by this body right here, at least six of you, who keep voting against them. My turn to talk. You be quiet. Outside agencies consume over nine million dollars. He spoke to me.
Let's have, let's have order and decorum, please, sir.
Well, get your Commissioner under control.
Talk to me, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor, get your Commissioner under control. He likes to bully people privately. He doesn't have the courage to do it in public.
Talk to me.
I'm talking to you. Get your Commissioner under control.
He's doing what he's supposed to do, please. You do the same.
He's supposed to act like an idiot, Mayor?
No. You're getting worse by the minute, Mr. Odom.
Well, this is my nice version, because I'm tired of people jumping on me because you guys attack our professionals out there. Somebody's got to stand up for them. You could reduce property taxes, four million mills across this county. I'm giving you a solution on how to do it. First of all, reduce four mills. Then you could have a referendum, which is allowed by law, for district by district to say, "Do you want to have your property taxes increased four mills to support outside agencies and the rec centers and parks in your district?" Let each of the nine districts decide. I know, and you know, you'll never do that because they'll all vote no. When they have to make a decision on priority, they want the money to stay in their pocket. You won't do it. You've decided by force, you're going to force all of us to pay for something that a very small percentage of the people want. Common sense is not very common with this group up here. So I'm calling you on by resolution to transfer the funds to make this pay raise happen. If you don't know how to do it, I'll show you how to do it. You've got to abandon these foolish spending priorities. If you can't sit there and tell me that there is something more important in priority in this budget than something less important, then you're not qualified to sit up there. You really aren't. Your priorities are all messed up. Blutany is a sin called out in the Bible, and you act like you can't do with less, but you expect us to do with less? This government needs a good gastric bypass. If you don't find a way without raising the property taxes to give these men and women their pay increases, I promise you I'll spend the next year doing everything I can to let all the taxpayers know who is to blame for their problems and to get you defeated next year. You can lead a person to office, but you can't make them think. Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry I got upset, but I don't appreciate him threatening me like he always does.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. We appreciate your comments, sir. Next, we've got Ms. Stanley Stewart. Ms. Stewart also wants to talk to us about a higher pay for the Police and Fire Department and also Fort Hawkins. Ms. Stewart, you'll recognize for up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, before you start your time, if you don't mind, please, sir, if you might, I wanted to, I have to say some of these ladies from the Vineville Christian Towers. My mother had a stroke a few years ago. My life changed then. Perhaps your association could get in contact with the Police Department and find some off-duty policemen who can provide security for you. Maybe Hug can pay for it, or maybe the Association can pay for it. But I think those ladies really deserve a better way of life right now, and it touched me. It touched me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Macon Bibb employees and staff, and above all, fellow Maconites. Most of you know my intentions to run for Mayor in the upcoming campaign. I truly look forward to sharing my ideas and hopes for our beloved city. We must usher in new voices for our city, be they Democrat, Republican, or Independent, voices that work together for a twenty-first century Macon. But I'm not here tonight in the capacity of a candidate. I'm here tonight in the greatest role of all, that of citizen. There's no greater role. Mayors, Governors, Presidents, all come and go, but to be a citizen of this great land is indeed a golden rock to forever stand upon. And from that glorious position, attempt to help our fellow human, to always fall on the side of what is right and just. There are two issues that concern me. Last year, I found myself in the budget debacle siding with Commissioners Lucas Bivens, Shepard, Watkins, and Tillman, as a debate wage concerning the libraries, parks, and transit. I found myself there because it was right and just. This year, and at this moment, I find myself on the side of Commissioners Wynne, Jones, and Allen, and I find myself there because it is right and just. There's absolutely no reason why a city the size of Macon Bibb cannot find the necessary dollars to fund a proper pay increase and honorable and generous pension for our Sheriff's Department, our Fire Department, and first responders across the board. All of our Macon Bibb employees deserve a higher and more adequate compensation, and there are ways to reach these goals, which I can't share in five minutes, but I will on the campaign trail. But in five minutes, I can say that the grandmother on Houston Avenue who only wants to walk her grandkids to the store for an after-school snack, she deserves to know that she lives in a city, and which is more, a community, where she won't be mugged or killed while trying to make the fabric of her family stronger. Or the father on Zeppelin Road or Westland Drive who goes out to his car at eleven P.M. to retrieve an item left. He should know that he is safe and that he won't be carjacked or killed. Crime has no boundaries. There's no such thing as a safe neighborhood or a good neighborhood, which is why we need more police officers on the streets of Macon. They should be from the communities. They should forge relationships with the citizens. They should be kind, compassionate, and caring. They are our blue line of protection, just as our farmer and rush into burning buildings distract people from wrecks, breathe life back into the lifeless. Our policemen, farmers, and first responders march into hell for that heavenly cause every day, every single day, and that heavenly cause is you and me. Don't insult them with incentives or bonuses. Pay them, honor them, and thank them, and there is no better way to thank them than to find the money to pay them. Find the money for a fair and generous pension, and by doing so, keeping all of us a little safer as we navigate under a veil of protection and slumber under a blanket of certainty. The second issue is Fort Hawkins. Play fair by that board. Give them what they need to survive and thrive from being the supply position of the War of eighteen twelve to being our illustrious city emblem of today. You have a group of volunteers who truly need our help, and I'm committed to help them, and I hope you are as well. Communication is the key to any successful endeavor. For those in power now, find a Fort Hawkins Board member and ask them what they need, and above all, help them with the utilities and basic upkeep. And to the Fort Hawkins Board, be proactive and tell what you need. Fort Hawkins was our city's beginning, and through proper tourism and advertising and marketing, Fort Hawkins can be an integral part of our future, a future that will be bright for Macon and all of our glorious citizens. May we forever do what is just and right for this beautiful city upon the Otmoggy, in this wonderful state, in this great land known as America. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stewart. We appreciate your patience, appreciate you being here and your comments. Next, we've got Mr. Willie Fraser. Mr. Fraser wants to talk to us about concerns in South Macon District and the West Macon Community District there. Mr. Fraser, thank you very much for being here. You'll recognize for up to five minutes, sir.
How you doing, Mr. Mayor? Thank you again for allowing me to be here, Commissioners. You know, it's been fitting what I heard from the Vineville Towers. You know, that really touched my heart as well, and what Stanley just said, and what's on my mind about my own community. He spoke of Houston Avenue. That's the area that I live in, South Macon, that I'm talking about today as well. You know, it's a strange thing when you walk out of where you live at and everything looks desolate and forgotten about and trodden. But as bad as South Macon is, and as many things as is forgotten about, you can't go out and sit on your porch and feel safe. That's true. When you walk down and go to the store and wonder whether you're going to be mugged again, that's true. You know, but I have a heart to want to see South Macon changed. I have a heart to want to see West Macon changed and do better. You know, for this murder and killing that happened recently and stuff like that, and I don't like to talk about stuff all the time, but when you live in this day in and day out and different stuff, it's hard not to talk about it and not to try to find a way to figure out change. I come here week after week, month after month, and stuff like that because I'm trying to figure out a way to change this. I want my children and my grandchildren and my great-grandchildren, as well as yours, to be safe in this community. You know, I haven't put anything on the forefront in the burner, but you know, I'm trying to get into government as well, and I'm thinking about running. And I wasn't going to say it out, and I wasn't going to put it out in front of people because a lot of people don't want you in certain positions to try to do things and to try to make change, but I honestly feel like I need to be in position to try to make change. I'm a Christian myself, and for Vineville Christian Towers and stuff like that, if you can't find a security guard, I want to give you my phone number. You call me, and I'll come and walk you to the drink machine. I'll come and stand around and make sure that you're safe until you fall asleep, until everybody is gone, and I'll volunteer to do that. You see, I don't have to stand up and get a check. I don't have to turn around and stand up for somebody to pay me, because everything that I do is not all about paying. There are a lot of things that I volunteer for that I get nothing for, but I get gratification because God knows that I'm trying to do the right thing, and God knows that I want to do and see the right thing in this community. And I'm with each and every one of you because I know that you chose those seats to do the very same thing. So I'm not here to put you down. I'm not here to look down on you. I'm here to find a way to help you, and thank you for my five minutes, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. We appreciate you being here. Appreciate your comment. Finally, Mr. Donald Richardson, got some grassroots reflections he wants to share with. Mr. Richardson, good to see you doing so well. We appreciate your patience. You'll recognize for up to five minutes.
Second Kings seven. Then Elijah said, "Hear ye the word of the Lord; thus saith the Lord: Tomorrow about this time shall a measure of fine flour be sold for a shekel, and two measures of barley for a shekel in the gate of Samaria." Then a lord on whose hand the king Then a lord on whose hand the king leaned answered the man of God, and said, "Behold, if the Lord would make windows in heaven, might this thing be?" And he said, "Behold, thou should see it with thine eyes, but shalt not eat thereof." Today's commentary. "Mr. Mayor, I see the problem that we are facing in the United States with respect to this new world order and the rise of the new leadership in Atlanta during the 1996 Olympics as one of the international labor market. The inner sanctum of the international warlords that is centered in a 50-mile radius between London and Amsterdam that control the holding companies of the Fortune 500 companies throughout the world." Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much, Ms. Richardson. We appreciate your commentary and appreciate your patience with us tonight. No points, oops, I do have a point of personal privilege, Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, for about two months, former Mayor C. Jack Ellis was contacting me about the issues and concerns over at Vineville Christian Towers, and finally, I had an opportunity to go over there and meet with the young ladies, the recycled teenagers, I would call them. I've done that more than once, and I showed them how to look up their commissioner and suggested that this commission could do a letter of support to the local HUD or the HUD Office, the Housing Authority, the owners, and it was one more entity that we support their efforts for these things to be looked at. And so I just hoped that we would get Crystal or Michael to draft the letter stating our support and send it to those agencies to try and help and serve them. And just to know that there's a lot of, people are always welcome to come here, and we are big men and women and adults, and, but I think it's important sometimes that people understand that we too are citizens, that we have family, friends, neighbors that we talk to that have the same issues and concerns as they do, and we don't want to ever be disrespectful to any of our citizens. And so sometimes if citizens hear us mumbo, that's why it's always best that we just hold the mumbo's to ourselves. And, but we don't often defend a lot of stuff that's said, but we have our PR person to try to put out true and accurate information. And so, so don't want anybody to feel that they can't come and talk to your government, this is your government, and so we do appreciate you when you come down, and we should all listen and be attentive and try not to hold our mumbo's to ourselves. And so we want to try and help our recycled teenagers the best we can and just hope that the commission members will join our, in a letter of support, and let's see if we can get them some, some, some help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Commissioner Wynne, got your light on as a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, first two things I want to say tonight. I want to say that I've heard a lot tonight. You are very great in expressing yourselves and your comments, all of you, whether I agreed with some things you said or not. Everyone that spoke tonight, I've never heard you so well expressed in your comments. Thank you for coming and speaking out. That's what we want you to do if you need to. Secondly, I just wanted to point out one positive thing that's happened in our community. We had a young lady named Stephanie Pearson. If you watch Jeopardy, she was on Jeopardy last night, one of our teenagers from Mount hills, and I wanted to commend her for getting that far because it's a tough job to get that far, to get on that show. So even though she didn't win, we were pulling for her, and I wanted to compliment her on her accomplishment and let our community know about that. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wynne. No other points of personal privilege. We've reached the end of our agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn? And without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.